America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kevin. We have a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Michaeline, second by Joe. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comment?
Consent.
Consent items. Do you have a motion to approve the consent items? Got a motion by Gary. Okay, Gary Jumbek is resigning. Second.
There's a letter that I'd like to read.
Hey, we have a second. Discussion.
Um, there's a letter that I'd like to read.
You can read it now?
Yes, from Jamie Woodard. As you noticed, Kathy Jumbek is resigning from the early childhood family education, paraprofessional position. And Jamie said, "I would like to thank Kathy Jumbek for all of the years of service she has given to the early childhood family education program. This is Jamie's seventh year with the program. It has been evident from the start that Mrs. Jumbek was and still is an important part of our program. She continually promotes the benefits of our program out in the community and tries to recruit new families. She is full of great ideas and always willing to go the extra mile. Parents and children both enjoy her, and she does a superb job in her role as an ECFE paraprofessional. She is very knowledgeable about the program and is willing to share her experiences as a parent who has been involved in the program. She is also able to find resources within the community that ECFE can utilize. Mrs. Jumbek will be truly missed in the program, and I am very saddened to see her leave. I know her heart is dedicated to the program, and she thoroughly enjoys working for the program. She's irreplaceable. I could always count on her. Sincerely, Jamie Woodard."
Okay. Thank you, Kevin, for your time. Go ahead.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Discussion items.
Audit service requests or proposals. Um, we had presentations from two of the five firms. There's the spreadsheet that contains the costs for them, the hours in the proposal, that's the hours that they are, we are paying for the audit firm to come in. The calculated hourly rate, that's kind of based on their hours. However, as you'll notice, one has a lot of hours, but they've also put clerical in, where the other firms didn't seem to put in those clerical as billables. So that's why that might be a little skewed in looking at that. And also, the percent of hours at partner-manager level, looking at that, it's looking at how much onsite the person who's actually in charge of the group would be. And there's one firm where that manager is going to be onsite more than the other firms. Do you have... Board members were there, is there something that you would like to add to?
You don't want to add anything? Amy? Well, all I want to say is that, you know, it comes down to the nuts and bolts of, do you want to stay? The continuity of keeping that person that we currently have, Clifton Larson, we get stability by having him as our auditor. You know, you'll probably get the same audit report, no matter who you get, what, there's no benefit money-wise, huge money-wise of switching. So, my recognition is to keep who we got, so.
And we'll be voting on this at the next meeting, Amy?
Um, yeah, I kind of wish, there was a, one of the groups was supposed to present to us, and we didn't get it arranged somehow. I don't know what happened, but they weren't there when we tried to Skype them. I wish we could have talked with them, so I don't know if we'll be scheduled.
So who did present?
Um, Clifton Allen and Abdo, so the first two on the list. And I'd Bailey was going to present, but we were never able to get their presentation, so.
He was away from Skype and wasn't responding, so.
So I would have liked to have heard theirs, but otherwise, I agree with Joe. Out of the ones that we heard and out of the numbers that we have, you know, I don't see a reason to change. I would have liked to have heard I'd Bailey though, and see what value they could have brought to the table, so.
Is there any way to, I mean, since the hours in the proposal, for I'd Bailey included clerical and the others didn't, is there any way, because we've had Clifton Allen in the past, is there any way to sort of make an estimate about how many clerical hours that cost has been? I don't know whether that's possible.
It would be easier to say all the hours.
Okay, well, that would be fine, too. I'm just trying to, I mean, they didn't predict, they weren't able to present. So, like you said, the question is, are you going to give them or not?
To me, we set it up for night, we didn't show.
Yeah, I mean, they were supposed to be there at 5:30, you know, like the plan was. Gets older grandnesses. That's a small.
Unless there was a typo and we told them 6:30 or something like that.
Yeah, unless there was something that comes up, you know.
No.
I would say, I mean, and one other thing on the Clifton Larson, actually, the cost went down from last year.
Yeah.
So that's a fact. Right, so, I mean, I just wanted to point that out also. So, I'm talking to them, they're, you know, they're...
And we're satisfied with their work, right?
Yeah.
Gwen and Quinn?
Well, Gwen mentioned it, because we've talked about looking at others in the past, and Gwen said, you know, last year, there was a whole new group of auditors that we got in, what there was in the past, you know, it was a new group that came on board. So we had new fresh eyes looking at it. It's not like, you know, they were just widgets makers, you know. So, and we did ask them a few questions as far as to look into other resources, if there's monies that's out there, and how is a school, can we get that money? Is there any changes coming up? Some of the concerns we had was the online, maybe had a few questions about online schools. Joe was asking about, you know, are there monies that we could get, looking for changes, how they work with Gwen on, if they see something coming down from the state, letting Gwen know so she can be prepared, you know, that we need to have to change something. And he had good answers, I felt, so.
And so we're acting on this?
Next time.
Next time. And how, is this, how long a contract is this? Is this three years?
Three.
Three years.
It's a three-year contract. At the end of three years, you don't really have to go for RFPs with audit firms, but you guys wanted to, so.
Doesn't cost us anything?
No.
No.
I don't think that's a bad practice.
Well, so anyway, that was our discussion, so.
Any other comments?
Amy, you have anything? Joe? Quinn, did you have anything? Gwen, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay.
I thought it was nice for the two that came, and I'm kind of sorry that Joel Stensel got waders crossed somehow.
Okay, well, if he gets back to you, he can let us know.
Okay.
Um, all business items for discussion and approval. We have a policy for second meeting, a policy eight-ten.
Policy eight-ten is still in draft form. We did some modification there. You'll see that there's some colored modification in this right now. And then, the, oh, it's a different, I thought that was yellow.
This is one that Michaeline used?
Yeah. Yep. And, no, the one that I sent you two?
Yeah. You want that up, too?
The one I sent, no, is this the, is this just from Michaeline, or is this the one from me? Because I, there was one with Michaeline made some edits, and then the one that I sent had edits that Todd Lundberg had also added.
So there's two of them in the, there's two of them in the...
There's two on SharePoint.
Yes.
I thought this was the one.
Oh, that's, I sent this one, because what Todd added is the procedures for how this would be handled, when it says any memorials are named facilities, if there's repairs or replacements, will be at the expense of the individual family or group that gave her memorial, that hasn't been addressed in the procedure section, as far as how we're going to make sure that happens. So before this gets approved, we really need to address that in the guidelines and procedures section.
So we'll read through it again, and...
And so it's still, we're still drafting and trying to figure out how the best way to write this and the best way to move forward, so that there isn't gray area. Because there's some areas right now that, in reading through, it's just like, okay, what are we really saying? What does this really mean?
So, I kind of, I didn't, I didn't understand exactly what you said about adding in. I see this public memorial activities must be pre-approved. Does that three-year waiting period apply to all aspects in the...
No, the way that, the way that got reworded until three years after the death of an individual, so that will not be finalized. And so that means that if, if something is, so let's say there's a monetary donation, we wouldn't actually name the facility until that individual has been dead for three years. You can begin it, it can be granted, and that's, do you want granted? Do you want finalized?
I don't, I think I'm in the minority, but I think three years is a really long time. And I also, I guess I, and maybe it's under a different policy, but if somebody wants to, if somebody dies and we're gifted money for an auditorium, I think...
Why would that be a...
Well, it's under a different policy, because I really think it's silly to sit on it for three years.
But it's not, it's just saying that the facility isn't, well, I don't know what it's...
So go to the unnamed auditorium for the first three years?
Well, you're not going to build an auditorium in one year.
Just because somebody dies and gives them money, doesn't mean the auditorium is just instantly going to be built. I mean...
But I just also don't think that we should wait three, I mean, if somebody does that, I don't understand the point of waiting three years.
All it takes is a policy change, right? And vote on a policy change that same year, could you? If you wanted to. Somebody brings some money, you can make a change that.
It takes two meetings to change a policy.
Year. Or we could discuss and override, you know. If somebody were to donate that amount of money to allow us to build a facility, I'm sure we'd have it sit down and we'd start the planning.
Anything we want to build, even if we have the money for it, has to get approved by MDE, and that, to get that written, and to get that up there, and to have them act on it, it's not a fast process to begin with.
So we have time to change if we needed to. So, well, look it over again. If you have some suggestions, you know, maybe you have this replaced with, if you have suggestions to reword that somehow, you know, let them know on that one year. I know you don't want it in three years, but, yeah, to me, three years is pretty fast. My mind goes pretty quick, but.
And we did put that in there after getting consensus from the board.
Okay, so more to come on that.
Well, I, so I'm, so more to come. So I think as a policy committee member, we haven't met, we've been doing this electronically, so I would ask everybody to read, including the administrators and the public, whoever is looking at this policy to give us information. You've said you're concerned about the waiting period, but look at the rest of the language as well, and then we probably need, as a policy committee, again...
Right, we'll probably need to meet possibly...
Unless we're, unless, you know, if there, especially if there are a lot of suggestions that things aren't, people aren't comfortable with it yet. If everyone's comfortable with it, we can present it again and in a finalized form and accept it. I had requested that we include the form, the nomination form. There has to kind of be a form for memorials, a form for, if there was, you know, because there's two different things there. So a form has to be developed. Todd weighed in on that, that that has to, some of that language has to be in there. I think we need to cross-reference it against policies that we have that are referring to donations and facilities that might apply. So there's a little bit of dotting the Ts and, dotting the Ts, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is to do.
You can dot your T if you want.
Thank you. We'll do. So I'm just trying to keep it moving, and if we just say, you know, more to come, I don't know what more, I don't know where we're at.
We do, we do have, as a policy committee, we do need to meet again.
Okay.
But we need to have the input, because that's why we brought it here, because we wanted to know that, are we going in a direction that the board would approve that policy now that we have consensus, now that you're seeing what we're doing, and looking at the most recent draft with changes after the last board meeting? Weigh in again, and then we'll use that to go back to policy committee, hammer out the final, and then bring the final back here.
So, Michaeline, you mentioned on these forms, you feel it would be best to have everybody look at all of that at one time, review. So you have all that together now?
No, the forms, I kind of, I think that's up to the administration to develop, not up to us, but just to see that we're getting the kind of information to get the process going. We could, I don't know what we would develop, I think. We make the policy, you get to make the procedures.
One, that's...
What I'm wondering is, it would be a good thing for all of us to have this new written one that you've done, you know, and the form sent to everybody as an individual package, not buried in this, you know, type of thing, have us review it that way? Would it be simpler for people? I don't know. Some people, it works better that way, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I could send a separate email on Friday with the policy and that, with the forms, we can now go to form fairly easily.
The main thing about the forms is, based on some of the things we've dealt with, which was fundraising, I think?
Yeah.
And the fundraising forms in each site, in each school, and each different fundraising event, the form got modified and altered, and it was all over the place. And so I'd rather have that development be part of, initially part of this.
Right. And then I can send that as a whole attachment out on Friday.
And then everybody send it back to you next week?
Right.
Before Friday?
And then the policy can maybe, maybe policy committee can meet March 14th, that's a Tuesday, so that we could meet before coming to the board meeting on the 16th.
So everybody look at it next week, before Friday, get it back to you before Friday, if you have updates or suggestions, and then that would give you guys enough time to... And again, obviously, if you have questions before that, get with Michaeline.
Yep.
With Quinn.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Sorry, the timeline is just kind of confusing to me. So about this three-year waiting period, so let's say that somebody wants to, let's say our scoreboard is broken, and we need a new scoreboard, and somebody would like to donate the money to buy the scoreboard, and they would like it to be named after somebody who died six months ago. Do we not do this, so we would just deny that because we need the scoreboard now?
No. I mean, I think that would be discussion item you bring to the board and say, okay, this is a situation. I mean, I think policy, and I may be wrong, is just something that's written, that it's guidelines.
Well, then why are we putting three years in there? We keep saying we're not going to follow three years, because...
Because, again, I don't know how often are we going to have somebody that's going to do that.
Well, I think that's a realistic, it's a potential scenario that could come up. I mean, if somebody wants, I don't know.
It's never come up. I haven't seen that.
It's what we were using for an example the last meeting, a scoreboard. If somebody wanted to...
We never had that come up. If it comes up, I think it would be discussion item, we talk about it.
But why have the three-year waiting period? If it's, if somebody wants to donate something to the school, why have such a long waiting period? Because they really need to then think, what are you going to need in three years? Not what do you need now? It's difficult to think about what you're going to need three years from now, and the funds associated. I can see the funds maybe showing up right away, and then having this three-year waiting period before we can spend it, and it could get extremely confusing, just in my mind. It's just something to think about. And I think if we're going to make all of these variances and say, well, in this case, we'll go ahead and do it right away, you know, if we're going to set the three-year thing, we've got to follow the three-year thing, otherwise, don't put it in there.
What is that waiting period safeguarding us from, then?
Emotional responses without time to...
It would be like if you do something without really looking into it. You know, if somebody passes away, a lot of people, you know, go overboard at that moment in time. Or they make a suggestion on something that may be something they feel like they should do, and not what would the person that passed away would really want. You know, there was not a lot of discussion going on.
And we're still going to be stuck, because even if we needed that scoreboard, you'd want that, you know, even they immediately passed away. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I just...
You almost want it just one way or the other.
It's, if I look at it from a purely monetary point of view, if they raise the funds and they want to spend it on something that is going to value the students, you know, I mean, we're not spending the money...
And I don't know that that would fall under this category, would that?
Yeah, that would be naming rights and...
This is recognition.
And they would be providing the funds and for something that's adding benefit to the school, but then you're saying, no, now you have to wait three years.
This is talking about, this is talking about a facility. You're talking about a donation. That's a different, that's a different policy.
And that's, I'm wondering if this part of it pertains to a...
I'm talking about, let's just say we have the courts.
This recognition of contribution.
We have the courts over by the elementary school. There was money that paid for those courts, and under this new policy, we would have said, no, you can't, if it would have went through under the policy through the school, we would have said, no, you can't, you can't do that. You can't, you can't name it for three years. So would the group still have done it? But I don't know, because it would be the unnamed courts waiting for the three-year period to then be named. It's...
Right.
But there, but I believe, I'm trying to find exactly, my understanding may be, it's been a long day, but naming rights in consideration to recognize contributions to the district were for new things. They're not for existing, for things we exist, have existing. There's for brand-new things, walkways.
Scoreboards.
We have a scoreboard, we have scoreboards. So...
It would be for a new scoreboard. Would be, they would be providing funds for something that enhanced the school.
They can, don't make a donation for a scoreboard, it might not be named. I mean, it might not get a name. It might, you know, it could be a sponsorship, or it could fall under some...
Well, that would be the point, if they wanted to do it. If I wanted to write a check over for my grandma, you know, and say, I would like to name the scoreboard, which I won't do, but, you know, if it's adding value to our school, why are we going to make them wait three years before they can hang up the sign?
There.
We already voted, I mean, kind of went through this already, haven't we?
Yeah, I think so.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, we did, we discussed it, and we said three years, then we go around, get a...
But I'm giving you scenarios, and when I say, we didn't talk about it in depth. It was like, well, how long, three years? And that was it.
I thought you gave your, this other examples that you gave before, or you gave at the last meeting.
No.
And that's why the language was changed to say, three years before it was put in place, but not three years before the conversation could begin. That gives the person making the nomination time to realize what they're getting into. It gives the school time to understand what's being requested. Three years is not very long. I agree with Tom, just...
My fear, and the reason I keep bringing it up, is I think that, I think we should welcome donations. If it's going to add benefit to the kids, I think we should welcome those, and I think that this three-year process slash waiting period could potentially hurt us, and so we won't get those donations. People will look at it and say, this is ridiculous, why would I have to wait three years? I want to give you $100,000 to do this to the school, I want to give you $10,000, because you need a new scoreboard, and having to wait three years for it, they might choose not to give us that money. And so that's my concern, is that in the end, you know, the kids aren't, you know, getting the new scoreboard, or whatever it is, that those potential donations could have given us, so.
Well, look it over, and again, you know, you have suggestions or thoughts, send them in. Quinn's going to send it out on Friday, look at it, put them in there, get them back to Ann before next Friday, and then the policy committee will meet on the 14th, you're thinking, correct, Quinn?
Yes.
And then we'll talk about it next meeting.
And so, just for clarification, then, we have moved ahead on, we are not naming anything existing.
We haven't voted on anything. And that, we're, this is just discussion on the policy at this time.
Well, let's, okay, let's clarify again, then, we'll back...
Well, you have to re-read, we're going to have to, they made some changes to it, so...
I missed, I'm sorry, I was a little...
No, no, no.
I'm under that impression, too, that if it was existing, that there was no name, it had to be something additional, so.
So, just for clarification, and we're going to, let's just use the football field, for example. We cannot name an existing football field, but if we needed to build a new one, then it could be built in recognition of someone? Is that what this policy is saying?
The, with the policy, there is...
A name in recognition.
There's a name in consideration, and that's for the consideration of the dollar amount to build it, and the name in recognition according to this, naming something for someone because they're a good person. They're a good person, but that we're not going to name something after them, just because they're a good person.
So yes, if they provided the funds for the football field and the three-year period, waiting period had passed, both of those criteria, then yes, you could potentially name them.
They would have a name. I was just wondering...
So this is, you know, again, remember, we, the policy committee did research, so this timeline, some of them were as late, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michaeline, five years, that people were waiting to put naming on anything, no matter how much money they did.
Some of them didn't have anything in the policy, some of them were five, some of them recommended a wait period without defining it.
That's why we took up the three, because we figured three years, by the time you, you know, if you were to even build a new football field, for example, we're going to use that, it would take at least probably two years to get everything in planning and get it started. You know, it doesn't happen that fast, because it's a school. So it's not like, you know, if somebody were to donate $100,000 to do that, to have the rights on it, you know, that would be discussion at the board, it would go through with regular...
I guess I'm just saying...
You know, and then we're talking about, okay, if you're going to do that, then who's going to maintain it if it's something new, you know, after the fact, there's all these costs you have to come up with.
We're just going to stay clear of the recognition of...
Yeah.
And...
And that's all reason, I mean, just because, where do we stop?
I know. I just, it's hard, some would say it's okay if we build it from the ground up, but, yeah, it's representing the same thing. You know, a name being on there, it's just a...
I did have a call today with someone saying that there are a lot of people, and once again, every time somebody says a lot of people, I have no idea what that actually means, but there are a lot of people that are very quietly supportive of the action the board is taking, and they're just not going to come and vocalize it at the board meeting. And so it was just basically a vote to...
I hear that, but I got to discount that a little bit, though, you know, because we do have some people that do come to the board meeting.
Right.
Voices of concern. I hear you.
Yep.
It goes both ways, you know, in my mind, I mean, it's just, you know, we have to come up with something that is going to be in the middle, that's going to keep everybody happy, and there's other avenues that everybody can take. You won't make everybody happy. No, you're never going to. That's why you're on this board.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's an easy argument to say it's okay to have the name on it after, you know, it just comes across a little cold, they're saying, oh, you're willing to build it.
Yeah, I know.
And then just having your... And then just having your name on it.
And we talked about having nothing for, in recognition of contribution too. But then we thought, hold on a second. Then we're saying that nobody can give us money for anything. And we thought that was kind of chopping her arm off as well. So we, if somebody wants to give the money to have a name on it, we want to be able to accept the money because we want. And I know it does sound cold, but the reality is we have to be, we have to be as objective as possible. And a lot of this, as far as deeming someone worthy, there's a lot of subjectivity.
Right.
That goes into that.
Okay. How long? Does anybody else have anything to add? Just make, do what, you know, take a look at it. Okay, Easeman, potential Easeman.
I'm going to be meeting with Marlene on Tuesday. She's coming with her surveyor. There's actually two potential easements that we will need to be discussing. The existing driveway that comes out to the bunkhouse onto South Jefferson. Because South Jefferson is paved six feet to the east of where it's platted. There's, needs to be a six-foot easement so that she can sell that chunk of land and the person can actually drive in on the driveway. And talking to the lawyer, the lawyer said, how, and asked how long he'd been there. And I said, over 20 years. And she said, well, technically, because of decades of use, then it might be like an unwritten easement already. But she said, just to make it clean and then you, you can write it up so that you're sure that if anything happens on that driveway, she takes responsibility for it. Because it, it would be that easement. So that.
She does have, have another option, right? Another entrance?
For.
For the house?
For the bunkhouse? For the existing house?
Living house, right?
Oh, we're not talking.
I know that, I know that.
Yep. But that one, it's, it's just, we should probably clean that one up anyway because the driveway is there. And we're, I can't imagine the school forcing her to, to dig it up because it's six feet.
And how was that discovered?
When, well, when we had to get the variance for the bus shed and I had to go to the county to figure out where the road was platted. And then we realized it, it's not paved where it's platted. So I, I mentioned.
And that went to the.
When, then when she was going to sell her property, everybody realized that, oh, you should have that surveyed because it might not be where you think it is. And so that's when, so extending the roof line on the bus shed kind of uncovered all of that. Well, it's, it's the correct slope now. But, and then the other thing is the driveway going into the new lot. We're going to be discussing that and discussing options. And I talked to the lawyer about different options. So I'll, I'll talk to Marlene about those. And that's, hopefully in our next meeting, we can get this, something I can get descriptions to you so you've got something to vote on.
That has to be a lot wider than I would do with.
Oh, because she doesn't own anything right up next to the road, she needs 75 feet of frontage. Building code in Houston, 75 feet of frontage is necessary to consider a lot, a buildable lot. And so there's a 75-foot, 75 basically by six-foot chunk of land that's in question. So it's not just an easement for a driveway. It would be that 450 square foot swath that we're talking about. And we've got different options there, but I want to talk to Marlene about them.
Any other questions on that? Okay, new business, items for discussion and approval, policies for first reading. You guys know the routine on that, read through the policies. Any major changes that we should know about, Michaeline?
I haven't looked at them yet, Ann.
No, they're minimal. Some things in the cross-reference, those legal things.
And remember, the credit card policy is one that we did. That's our own original policy. So look through that because there, we don't have MSBA model policy on that.
Is there any, did you have the auditors look at that policy at all? And what, what is their comment on that policy? Credit card.
Credit card.
Credit card.
Are they okay with it? Are there any?
They're, they're not yet.
Okay.
We could ask before.
Well, I just, you know, I mean, it was because of an audit that the credit card policy in part was developed. So making sure we're not raising any flags there as laws and audits and school finance is concerned is probably to be aware of.
Yep.
Okay. Any else, Michaeline?
No.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, announcements, important events, board leadership planning session, six o'clock Thursday, March 9th.
I will have the survey results. Today is the last day, so I will get the survey results out to everybody tomorrow. So you've got a chance to mull those over and, and think about the impact of the input. As of yesterday, 88 people had completed that.
How many was it sent to?
All exchange users, so about 170. So.
That's pretty good.
Yes. Can you, is there a reminder plan going out?
I can send one tonight.
I just think it wouldn't hurt. People probably, you know, may have intended and waited till the deadline and then forgotten the deadlines.
Okay. I can send one out tonight as soon as we're done and give them until noon tomorrow.
That's good. Yes. Anything else on that, Quinn? Anybody have any questions on the planned meeting?
Well, and do we have any requests for food for supper?
Well, usually we alternate it. I don't know where we went last time.
We got subs from SubZero.
Mm-hmm. And last time we went from there and then over to, what did we get? Yeah, time.
Did we end up then getting pizzas at Cenex or?
I thought so, but smoking drum. Pull up outside. Nice guy. Gary's going to bring food from across. I don't know if anybody has any specific.
And if anyone has any dietary concerns, please let me know.
What's, what's our, what's our agenda for that night? Taking the feedback? And what's our next step? I've forgotten.
Well, the, it's been a question. From there, did you want to come up with those, the Foci or the focuses for us going forward? Or did you want that to be given to a group? Did you want, what do you want your next steps to be, I guess?
I mean, we've had a conversation about who else should be invited in and when should they be invited in. And if it's just a matter of receiving broader input on the list we generated, that's good. But what are we going to, what are we going to do with?
I think, to me, it'd be best to focus, take it and condense it as much as possible before we start opening it up. If we're going to look at bringing other people in to narrow, you know, goal from what we find out, you know what I mean, off the survey? See what that is and then narrow it down so we have something we can focus on and then press forward with. And are you looking at bringing in other people to go farther after, other than what we've had in the group?
Well, we, we need to.
I mean, we have input from others right now coming in. And I thought that was about as all we were going to do. And then we were going to sit down with that input and then crunch it down, take that and look at, compare it with what we already discussed, right?
What typically happens when you're looking at these four areas, then you start seeing, okay, here we've got a strength and here we have a weakness. And then this, this strength can maybe, if we have this, this goal or this focus, this, this initiative that we put in place, it's a way to build on this strength and to kind of mitigate the weakness. And so then you use the SWOT analysis to start planning those initiatives and that push forward. Did you want this meeting to start developing those initiatives for that push forward? Did you, did you want those focus areas where we're going to really put our time and our energy moving forward? Is that what you wanted to do in this meeting? Or do you feel that that should be done by a, a more diverse group than this?
I think we need to do it. I mean, we can always expand on it. But if we can't set the focus, I mean, if the leadership team and us can't set the focus, how would adding more people help set the focus? I think, I assume we'll see some trends once we look at the data. I already see trends and I'm hoping that the feedback we got aligns with those.
I mean, yeah, I think we need to continue pushing forward on it.
I, I would, for the meeting next Thursday, so we have it somewhere. The initial list that we came up with is going to be a different list, probably end up a different list based on the broader input. So for comparison's sake, I would like to have access to our list and the added input so that we can see if the trends continue or if there's redirecting or, so that we don't just forget where we started and now pick up with this new thing. Just.
No, and that's a good idea because that's what we want to see is what everybody's. That's what we wanted there and then go through that.
And then to do real strategic planning, then you come up with your, like, maybe four, five, six areas of focus. And then really those each need to be fleshed out as far as, okay, what are you going to do? What are we going to see? What timelines? Who's responsible? How are you going to evaluate? That all of those steps need to be done because without it, it's just pretty words on a paper.
I would say let's see how many steps we can complete next at that meeting. But again, limited to not seven hours type thing.
Plan on two.
Yeah. So let's try to. Do what we can, keep moving it forward. Okay? Okay, who, unless you were at a meeting and committee updates? We talked about the finance meeting we had earlier, the online school committee meeting. There's going to be one on the 16th. And I'm assuming maybe you're going to give it, Quinn, to kind of go over some ideas for the agenda? Is there any other?
One thing on that, there will be a sheet that we'll have at that committee meeting that will also come here as far as, I've been going through the internal audit with K-12 on things that they saw that they would like to see in our student handbook, that are things that aren't there yet. Things that their legal team felt should be there. So we'll have some things that will be added to the handbook, but they would like more approval on that. So.
Do we have to approve it that night then or?
Then.
On this, that meeting, the 16th?
No, it doesn't have to be approved that night, but you'll see it that night.
I was just saying, because in case the committee, we sit down with it, we have some suggestions or, yeah.
Well, I want the online committee to see it before it comes to the board too.
Okay.
Well, and in the future, if we could, if time and work, I'd maybe like to work through that stuff first and then have it come to the board later.
Oh, that's what we'll do, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if it'll be ready to come to the board right away.
No, I, I don't see it. I'm just saying that's why, I mean, we'll look at it as a committee and then we'll see what we want to do with it from there, like we would normally.
Instead of it just being a committee review, I'd like it to, the committee to actually meet and discuss and maybe work with K-12 a little bit and then have it come to the board. Instead of it just being a quick review and we bring it. I'd like to see the committee to be functioning a little better and doing some work instead of just reviewing and bringing to the board.
So you wanted the committee to work with K-12 on this instead of?
Well, once K-12 has, you said they've had a list of something they want us to go over, correct? So what we.
We've been going through it all.
Yeah, I'd like the committee to be involved earlier in that. Definitely, definitely a committee involvement. Instead of just coming to us for a stand, have us involved.
Well, set up the meeting or the agenda for us to review. And is there any other meetings that we've had? Oh, Gary, you had something right with the.
Both.
Talked on that.
The.
You guys close call.
Yeah, the.
Chapter.
UNESCO came down and had a couple of different drawings. They never got back to me about the elevation of the ceiling.
Of the hole.
The height of the ceiling as far as what, what's allowed. Looking at the potential of building on a cafeteria in the front of the, the elementary school on the gym side and then developing a more secure entrance right there because our, our entrance isn't, it's as secure as we can get it. It's not as secure as we'd like it to be because they're still buzzed in down there and they can basically wander through the building from when they're buzzed in. It's better than what it used to be, definitely. But there were different things that we, we talked about and looked at. And there are some other, one of the things though is we're not sure how much ceiling height we're actually going to get in that addition because it would have to stay underneath the windows in the gymnasium.
Unless we block them up.
Unless we blocked off all of them.
The other thing that came up was a setback from the street sidewalk. So you do have a chance to check on it.
Um, we, the way they've got it drawn, it's going all the way to the, the front that, there's a little jog in the elementary school. And they had it going around that entire, out to that jog. We wouldn't be able to, the setback is such where we wouldn't be able to do that whole thing. It's on, if you're looking at this side, you'll notice that right now the building comes in and right now we've got the little, the hostas are here and the hole is right there. We can't build it out this far. It would have to.
In there?
Come to that line, yeah.
But it, so it's a problem from this street, not this one?
No, this, this street would be fine, but that street, because it is closer to that street, the setback is such that.
Okay.
What we could ask is for a variance based on continuing the existing one. But if we wanted to do it as drawn, it would require a variance for some.
So are we doing this just so we know what the number is or why are we?
We're, we're doing this to see, number one, is it feasible? I mean, can we even put the addition there? Because we're also looking, there are some other. I, I'm not sure what there are too. There's some metal manhole cover type things in the, in the front of the school. So we're looking to see if it's even feasible to do this. And what could actually fit in that space if we wanted to, to do this? Then if this is something that, that is feasible, if this is something that we do want to pursue, that's when we start looking at, if we're going to try to do any type of building, it needs to go through. of building, it needs to go through the Department of Education, it needs to go through the review and comment section of finance, and one of the first things you need to prove in review and comment is either you've got new enrollment, and so you need to expand your building because of new enrollment, or because the, the existing space doesn't allow for some programs that are necessary. And we don't have the enrollment increasing to really justify it. However, by converting the existing cafeteria, the existing kitchen space into a STEM lab, because we don't have science lab facilities in that building, they thought that that could get it through review and comment, and we actually wanted to go through with this.
Well, the reason I ask is because, I mean, I think it's great to kinda get a number, but I would assume that we would talk about this after we're done strategic planning, and we know what our focus areas are, because, I mean, this might be our main focus, and it might not be a focus. So I wouldn't spend a lot of time on it until after we're done with our, what our focus areas are.
This is just a continuation, because this is what the board had directed us to do, so we were following you on the board.
This has been on the document, we've been talking for quite a while.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's nice to know, is it a million dollars, or three million, or whatever?
Yeah, it's two-point-three.
Yeah.
Right here, two-point-three it said. It was not a variance, so it's, yeah.
And, and that's just for the, the structure. You also have to plan for rehabbing the existing cafeteria and, and the service preparation area, too, so that would be into more usable space. Anytime you're rehabbing, it costs money.
Any, any part of this being considered multipurpose or community, or we've shifted this to just moving the cafeteria here to open up another space in the building for students?
I asked the community if they would like to be considered in any of these talks, and they said no.
The community?
City, city, because when the city hall, city council is looking at, city council, EDA slash planning commission is looking at the new community center, and I said, would you like to enter into a school community partnership? And they said no.
Okay. Is that good to know?
Yeah.
Well, we also talked about the possibility of a rubberized floor, so it would be.
Okay, so that's a possibility in the further room. Yeah, okay.
And we wanted to first just to see if it's feasible to build it there, if it would actually provide usable space.
Well, we have obviously, you know, a document before, we would've got all the work done, it's got done. You know, you have to have, you have to have stuff like this done when opportunities come up, like the funding we just had, if we would've had what we had. No, no, I know, but what I'm getting at, Grant, is down the road. Even if we don't do this for five years, if two years from now they come up and say, hey, we got this extra money, do you have any projects on the books that you're looking at doing? You know, some schools don't even do that. We are, we're prepared, so if something does come up, and we have an opportunity, and there's money available from the state or whatever, we can say, hey, we've got this started, it wouldn't take much for us to, you know, add on.
The shovel writing projects.
Yeah, that's kind of what we wanna be always, I think, so.
Well, that's about one-point-six-five billion.
One other, one other meeting, can I speak to, just to inform, we got a meet and confer meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Um, this, that was Thursday, Tuesday morning? No. Yeah. I forget, like, the week has been a blur. Anyway, meet and confer is, I think, going quite well. The representatives there said they, they feel like grievances are down to the lowest level ever, and they really felt meet and confer was working, and I think that's just a very positive message that we're hearing, that the discussion and the dialogue is respectful and it's useful, and I think we're, it's not, there's not a lot of big issues, but there are things that we are listening, and they're listening, and it's a good conversation.
We're trying to make sure that the procedures and the processes that we're using, number one, are clear to everybody, are communicated well, and then are followed as they have been communicated. So it's, that's always a work in process, but I think it has improved greatly.
That is very good, Mike. The other thing I'd like to bring up is negotiation, for those who don't know, if you, you got a letter, right, Grant?
Yeah, you did, too.
I know. So the conversation is gonna start in?
Three, two.
It could start in April.
So we, do we wanna meet prior, obviously, to sit down and kinda give with Grant and Glenn on numbers and stuff? So.
Strategic planning would help.
Yes, and that's, we, we have to kinda know where we, we wanna go to.
Well, that's, I mean, some just bring it up, because they're bringing it up, and as we know, we don't wanna wait until August of the year to do anything, we wanna get it moving.
And just as a reminder that the other groups have not yet said they are intent to negotiate, but we will get that same type of notification from the principals, from supervisory and confidential, from the professional group, and bus drivers. Those are the other groups that are getting negotiated this time around as well. It feels like we just did them.
We did. But hey, we enjoyed that.
Yeah, but you had a couple months with no negotiations going on, you should celebrate that.
Exactly. Okay. Any other feedback or anything else you wanna bring up, Grant? Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Joe, second by Mimi, discussion? Call in favor? Close? Thank you, people.